Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting at the Temple ISD Board of Trustees on August 9th, 2021, beginning here at 6:00 PM. Our first item is to declare a quorum, which we do have. Our second item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item three is the public forum. In Maryland, we don't have anybody speak. Okay. Item four is the superintendent's recognitions. And would the board like to come out front? So the board members can come out front. Our first one is the Tazby Media Honor Roll. And Maria Aguilara, KCEN, Leah McNeil, KAVV, Paige Ellenberger, KAVV, Vincent Winter, KAVV, Eric Garcia, Temple Daily Telegram, Joel Valley, Temple Daily Telegram, and Nan Dixon, Temple Daily Telegram.
Thank you. This is always a great presentation, and it's a lot of fun, and really, truly doesn't even begin to express our appreciation to our media partners, but we will try to at least convey a little bit of that this evening. We are pleased to announce that we had seven local media members that were named to the 2021 Media Honor Roll, which is a program sponsored by the Texas Association of School Boards. The Media Honor Roll recognizes media representatives statewide for fair and balanced reporting of news about public schools. We have four of those media representatives with us this evening, so as I call your name, if you'll come forward, please, and get your certificate and stand with the board. KCEN, we have Maria Aguilara. Congratulations, and thank you.
No, I'm gonna drop them.
Okay.
Congratulations.
We'll do pictures with each one, with each entity, and then we'll do a full one. Yes. And Maria is on typically in the mornings, and she has spent a lot of time with us, though, in the district, really getting to know our students and our staff, and really making sure, especially with our COVID protocols, that everybody was informed, and so we just truly appreciate her partnership in getting to know her very early in some mornings. From the Temple Daily Telegram, we have three staff members that we would like to recognize. First is Eric Garcia, who is editor with the Telegram, and we have truly enjoyed our partnership with Eric through the years. But Eric, this past year, incidentally, also did a lot of writing and covered several of our really important stories, and we appreciate the way that he did that. Joel Valley is education reporter. So we've known Joel for, Joel, is this three years now?
Two.
Two, okay, coming up two years. And Joel is always a great partner, and we love to have him at events and reporting on our stories. And then Nan Dixon is a freelance photographer that works with the Telegram, and you will probably see Nan about, just about anywhere and everywhere. Her face is very familiar to all of you, and she does a great job telling stories through photography, and she has just captured some incredible moments in our district, and we are so grateful. And truly, for the partnership with the TDT, we couldn't do what we do without you. We appreciate you so very much. And really, for all of you, thank you for investing in Temple ISD, because that's what all of you have done, more so than you had to, more than the nature of just the job, and for telling our story with integrity. And we truly appreciate you doing that for us and supporting Temple ISD.
It could not surprise anybody, I'll make a few comments. I'll just say, I can't think of a time, maybe in the last 30 years, maybe longer, where public interest has been so high in education, in just what's going on because of the given circumstances, and these folks have done a great job in informing the public. The news isn't always good, right? It's not always bad, but it's accurate. And that's really the job of informing the public, and they have done a fantastic job. So from us to you, we really appreciate you, and these are honors that are well deserved. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. So if y'all don't mind, standing next to Maria, we'll do that one first, and then Maria can step down, and then we'll just have the TDT picture. Yeah.
I can't see a pretty smile. I saw it in the car.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you so much. Go to sleep.
A consideration for approval to hire Courtney Christian as the principal of Hector P. Garcia Elementary. Dave McCollough is there.
So I have the distinct pleasure of introducing Ms. Christian. The hiring committee for the position of principal at Hector P. Garcia comprised of Virginia McKeller, William Melbrook, Claudia Madrano, Amanda McQueen, Lori Cook, Laura Vosselin, Adrian Lopez, and Batum Witz interviewed six candidates for the position of principal on July 22nd. From those six, they selected two individuals to interview with the SLT, which occurred on July 27th, and the SLT selected Ms. Courtney Christian as the lone finalist to present to you. Ms. Christian received her Bachelor of Arts in elementary education in 1996 from Harding University, and a Master of Education in 2012 from the University of Texas in Tyler. Ms. Christian comes with a wealth of knowledge in curriculum and instruction, having served as a fourth and fifth grade teacher, an intervention specialist, and an instructional coach. She currently serves as an assistant principal at Spire Elementary in Belton ISD. We don't hold that against her. We're gonna get her. As you see, we've got her in blue today. And she currently resides in West Temple and has been married to Jason Christian, who's here, and she'll introduce him, for 24 years. She has three children, not 24 children, you may feel like that some days. Aiden, who's 23, Ryan, who's 21, and Brady, who's 17, who's here. And she just added a new daughter-in-law to the family this summer, with the marriage of Ryan and Sophia. As a mother of three sons, she says she enjoys a lot of adventurous activities she never intended to experience. Ms. Christian grew up in the Houston area and moved to Temple when she married and quickly fell in love with the smaller town of life. Her hobbies include reading, gardening, and vacationing in the mountains. It is great, great pleasure that the committee recommends Ms. Courtney Christian for the position of principal of Hector P. Garcia.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? This does require a motion?
I'd like to make a move to approve, or a motion to approve, Courtney Christian for principal for Hector P. Garcia.
Motion by Ms. Gallin.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dr. Sanhi. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The motion is approved. Welcome to Temple.
I'm super excited to be here. I have to tell you, well, I guess I'll introduce my family first. This is my husband, Jason Christian, and he is actually a school administrator also in Colleen, so don't hold that against him or I either. This is my youngest son, Brady, who's 17, and then we have our older son, Aiden, who is in law school in Denver, and Ryan and Sophia finishing their senior year at Abilene Christian, so that's my family. All right. But I just want to thank y'all so much for this opportunity. From the beginning, just the interview process, Temple stood out the smallest of things, making sure that the candidates had a bottle of water on the table, and just making the eye contact and the feedback that I received from the committee. So Temple has become known for supporting, deeply supporting their administrators and their staff, and so that was a huge, huge draw for me, so I thank you so much for this opportunity. We had a great day of learning today, and I'm excited to continue, so thank you for approving me, because I wasn't sure what we were gonna do after that, if I didn't. I left some ICs with detailed notes, just in case. So, but these folks, we had a blast of a day. They are wonderful. I feel like we're family already. They were kind, and I don't know what the word is, forgiving, I guess, to a first-year principal and trying to make my way around everything, and we don't have everything together with schedules and stuff, but everyone has pitched in, it's been wonderful. We are looking forward to a year of a lot of visioning and culture building, setting our expectations together. We have a whole lot of new teachers, a lot of new staff, a lot of young staff, too, and so we're super excited about building that together. We talked a lot today about deep levels of learning for students, and that's every single student, all of our, you know, from our most struggling learner to our most high-achieving learner, and so we're looking really forward to digging into that and how we can personalize learning for each of those kids. So I just thank you so much for allowing me to call Temple home and hope that I can have a long career with you guys. So thank you so much.
And Courtney, before you come up here and shake everybody's hand, that's the cue. I do want to make a comment, and it's one that we shared in the senior leadership team meeting, and I think I've shared it with a few of the board members, and it also applies to another principal we've recently hired that's in the audience, Jill. I think that, I think there are some folks that, you know, when you're going through the interview process, you say, if they are hired for that campus, they would be perfect. Like, you almost have to kind of fit them in to be a match and do well. And then, once in a while, there are ones that come along, and when they leave the room, you're like, they'd be good anywhere. They're just that good. And for Jill, and that's the last time I'll say your name, because this is her day. And, but Courtney, that's exactly, that's exactly what we felt when you left, that you would be good anywhere. And Garcia, I know, is excited to have you. I know how they rated you, and they're very excited, and you guys are gonna do some really good things there as well. So we appreciate you choosing us, and keep wearing that blue, and you'll be wearing it for a good while, so come on up and shake our hands. Thanks.
Usually, it's on the front side. I want to point out everything there. Appreciate all the gators showing up here. Gotta burn the broom stack.
And Mr. Christian, I want to thank you publicly ahead of time for sharing her with us. You have no idea how much time we're gonna chew up from her. But thank you so much.
He is retiring, so he already has a long, long list of things to do. I don't want us to photo bomb.
I like that one.
I don't want to take a real one.
He was behind y'all photo bombing.
Real, like this.
Six A, consideration for approval of the 2021-2022 goals and performance objectives. Members, you had this in your packets. I'll just go through and name the goals and the performance objectives. Goal one, academics, is Temple ISD will provide rigorous standards of academic achievement to prepare 21st century learners for graduation and post-secondary opportunities. The performance objective one is Temple ISD campuses will meet or exceed state standards with the Texas Accountability System. Performance objective two, Temple ISD will increase the graduation rate to 94% or above and reduce the dropout rate to 2% or less. Performance objective three, Temple ISD will recruit, develop, and retain highly qualified teachers and staff in order to reduce the teacher attrition rate from 23.5%, that's T-A-P-R, 2019-2020, to 20%. Performance objective four is Temple ISD will provide quality programs that enhance the educational experience for our students. Performance objective five, Temple ISD will support student success through effective and efficient organizational processes. Goal two, academics, the percent of third-grade students that score meets grade level or above on Star Reading will increase from 27% 2021 to 33% by 2025. The performance objective one on this is the percent of pre-K students that score on track in phonics awareness on the Circle PM literacy diagnostic will increase from 91% EOI 2021 to 97% by EOI 2025. Performance objective two, the percent of kindergarten students that score at or above grade level on the MAP literacy diagnostic will increase from 34% EOI 2021 to 40% by EOI 2025. Performance objective three, the percent of first-grade students that score at or above grade level on the MAP literacy diagnostic will increase from 28% end of year 2021 to 34% by end of year 2025. The performance objective four, the percent of second-grade students that score at or above grade level on the MAP literacy diagnostic will increase from 31% end of year 2021 to 37% by end of year 2025. Goal three, academics, the percent of third-grade students that score meets grade level or above on Star Math will increase from 22% 2021 to 28% by 2025. The percent of pre-K students that score on track in math on the Circle PM math diagnostic will increase from 98% end of year 2021 to 100% by end of year 2025. Performance objective two, the percent of kindergarten students that score at or above grade level on on-track on the MAP math diagnostic will increase from 33% end of year 2021 to 39% by end of year 2025. Performance objective three, the percent of first-grade students that score at or above grade level on the MAP math diagnostic will increase from 32% end of year 2021 to 38% by end of year 2025. Performance objective four, the percent of second-grade students that score at or above grade level on the MAP diagnostic will increase from 21% end of year 2021 to 27% by end of year 2025. Goal four, academics, the percent of graduates that obtain CCMR points will increase from 34%, 37% to 43% by June 2025. And the performance objective one, the percent of high school graduates meeting the TSI requirement and/or early college credit criteria will increase from 19% to 25% by June 2025. And the performance objective two, the percent of high school graduates earning an industry certificate will increase from 8% to 14% by June 2025. Goal five, behavior, Temple ISD will provide a safe and healthy environment to support positive behavior for students, staff, families, and community. Performance objective one, Temple ISD will provide structures that will support the safety, mental health, and overall well-being of our students and staff. Performance objective two, Temple ISD will develop and maintain academically driven and functionally appropriate facilities where student safety and health are paramount. And performance objective three, Temple ISD will provide support at each campus focused on improving student behavior, resulting in decreased ISS, OSS, and DAAP placements. And goal six, attendance, Temple ISD will develop, facilitate, support strategies to increase attendance and participation of students, parents, and staff in school-related activities. And the performance objective one, Temple ISD will increase student attendance at each campus to reach a district student attendance rate of 95%. Performance objective two, Temple ISD will maintain a teacher attendance average of 94% or above. Members, these are the goals and the performance objectives. Is there any discussion? This does require a vote to adopt.
I make a motion that the goals and performance objectives be approved as read for 2021 and 2022.
A motion by Mr. Gaines.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Items B is future items of discussion. Anything I wish to hear at a future board meeting? Okay. Item C is important dates, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Ott.
Okay. I'm gonna rewind a little bit to last Friday. I want to thank Donna Ward for doing a fantastic job putting on her first new teacher induction ceremony. I thought it went very well. I think we had 117 teachers there, something, something like that, pretty close to that number. I appreciate the board members for being there and welcoming them as well. I think we have a great group, they're very excited, and we're looking forward to getting the year going, but you guys did a great job, Donna, I appreciate it. That evening, had a wonderful experience presenting at the Hindu Temple Friday evening, and I want to thank Sandhya for setting that up and being a great host. It was a fantastic opportunity to answer questions and offer some information and present to the group, and thank all of you that had a chance to show up as well. Next, August 11th, I guess this Wednesday, we have a team-building retreat, and also, it's not on here, but I do want to point out, we have a vaccination clinic as well from noon to 6:00, and we'll be doing that in coordination with McLean Children's Hospital, Baylor Scott &amp; White, and it's anybody can show up for that. So it's not just relegated to students or staff, it's anybody in the community, and it's at the back of the high school. August 16th, we have a special meeting, and that will be a meeting where we will have citizens present a recommendation to the Board of Trustees for your consideration. And then, we have convocation the 18th of August, and that will be in the auditorium. We're very excited about that. And also excited, that evening, we have the grand opening for Meredith Dunbar Early Childhood Celebration. We have Mean Joe Green on the program. We have Lanell Davis, our very own, as a graduate on the program. San Jeanette, who's also a graduate, will be closing us in prayer. But it's a great program, and we hope that you can come out and see the wonderful new inside of the facility, and people are very excited about that. Meet the Teacher Nights the following day at the elementary campuses. It's on August 19th, and then at Meredith, it's August 23rd, and then we have our School Board Policy Committee, the 25th of August, Facilities Committee, the 26th of August, and then our next meetings are September 9th and 13th. I don't have anything else unless you have questions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ott. Item seven is consent items. What is the wish of the board to hear, the motions?
I move that we...
I think there may be an abstention first.
I'm sorry? Yep, okay, we can do that.
I believe that abstention on the MOUs?
Yes. So, yeah, I will abstain from voting.
Okay. So D1 and 2, Dr. Sanhi, Sanhi will abstain, excuse me, abstain from voting, and so there's a motion now by Mrs. Gallin.
So, and then I move that we approve all other items, which is A through C4 and D3 through E2.
Okay. A motion by Mrs. Gallin, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion passes. Now I'll bring up item D1, Baylor Scott &amp; White, McLean Children's Hospital Campus Medical Center-based Education Program, MOU. Is there a motion?
Can we do both of them together?
We need to do them separately.
Who for who?
Motion by Ms. Suarez.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Gallin. All in favor, recognized by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there, there is an abstention? Yes, there's abstention by Dr. Sanhi. Okay. Thank you very much.
That didn't happen very often.
Yeah. We're not used to this.
Sorry.
No, no. Item D2 is Scott &amp; White Memorial Hospital, Baylor Scott &amp; White, McLean Children's Medical Center, and Temple ISD, MOU. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion by Ms. Suarez.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's an abstention?
I will abstain.
By Dr. Sanhi. Yeah, thank you very much. The motion passes. Thank you. Appreciate it. Item eight, action items. A, human resources, no items. B, curriculum instruction, no items. Okay. C, finance facilities, no items. Okay. D, student services. D1, consideration for approval of the 2021-2022 Student Code of Conduct. Mr. Hagenberg, thank you.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Attached to your materials are the major changes for the Student Code of Conduct. As a reminder, the Student Code of Conduct is something that the board approves... As a reminder, the Student Code of Conduct is something that the board approves annually. So these are presented for your consideration tonight. The first item that you would notice as a, as a major change is through three sections, which you'll see listed here. Just a little bit on how it's structured, when you're talking about items, we don't want students to bring to school. It's structured at the highest level where it's prohibited weapons, and then it lists the things that we as a district also don't want included. So in this particular case, in the most recent legislative session, they took firearm silencers and suppression, suppressors from the prohibited weapons list. And so when we look at that, we still don't want those items at our campus, and so we add them to our prohibited items list. So it was removed from prohibited weapons from, from the penal code to our list of prohibited items. Next, for number two, talks about Title IX, and we've talked about that before with the changes in Title IX. It just references here, we will follow what the federal guidelines for Title IX is rather than getting into the specifics. So that was a, a change there. Item three, there was a change in the definition, and they included a disabled individual when they talked about sexual abuse. And so there are four instances in the Code of Conduct that reference that definition, so they added that to, to the code in all four of those locations. Number four, one of the things the legislature did this time, they added in the Texas Controlled Substances Act, they added a, a, a brand-new category for fentanyl. And so when those are referenced in the code, that additional code, that subcategory has been added to the Code of Conduct. Number five, e-cigarette, the definition of e-cigarettes not only includes the apparatus, but now it also includes the liquid and the things that are inside that. And lastly, number six, harassment, they added that repeated communications through social media is now included as harassment. And so those are the major changes in the Code of Conduct for this school year, and it's presented for your consideration.
Mr. Hagenberg, thank you. Any questions? This does require approval. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we make these changes to the Code of Conduct.
Motion by Mrs. Myers, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item two is review and discuss the 2021, 2022 Temple I S D parent and student handbooks. A, 2021 and 2022 handbook changes. B, 2021, 2022 elementary school parent and student handbook redlined. And C, 2021 through 2022 middle school and high school parent and student handbook redlined. Mr. Hagenberg.
Yes, sir. As Mr. Posey said, there are the redlined copies in your board material, so you can see the actual changes from last year to this year. Some of the highlights were presented to you also, and I'm going to highlight a few of those. The first one deals with human sexuality instruction. One of the major changes in this legislative session is that in the past, parents had 14 days to write us, written notice that they did not want their student to participate. Now, parents have to give us notice that their student is allowed to participate. So that's a significant change in how that's, how that is structured and operate, operates. Next, number three on your list is exemptions. This one is known as Riley's Rule, and it's excuses an absence for a student who has a serious and life-threatening illness and miss, and attendance in school is not feasible. And so that being the case, when it deals with their final grade or with truancy, those absences do not count for that. Number four, compulsory attendance exemptions also. This now Senate Bill 289 says that students can miss one day, excused absence, one day for getting their driver's license permit, and they can miss one day for their driver's license at the DMV. Number six, communications, legislature now put into code required that parents are required to give us their contact information. Next, number eight, the School Health Advisory Committee, the SHAC. They put that more like in the public information realm, and so that now these meetings have to be posted, they have to be on the website, they have to be recorded. So all those rules from the Texas Open Meetings Act now apply to the SHAC committee. In the past, we still had the minutes posted, and we still had the agendas, but now we're going to be required to put a recording in addition to that. Number 10, food service, this, these changes in the handbook just correlate with the seamless summer option that's been discussed before, so that all of our students now are able to get breakfast and lunch free of charge. The last thing I'll mention, at number nine and number 11 are sort of, and 12 are combined. This is from House Bill 4545, that parents can request, even though they, a student satisfied requirements for promotion, or they satisfied the requirements on the E O C test, that the parent can request the student being retained for this school year, or even though they passed, can ask for them to take the E O C again. And then lastly, the, another thing, House Bill 4545 setup is accelerated instruction for those who did not pass the STAR, and there's lots of requirements with that, and I'm sure, sure in the near future that the Curriculum Department will be presenting information on that and accelerated instruction. And those are the changes from the handbook. Any questions?
Any questions? All right. Appreciate it. This was just a review discussion item. There was no action taken tonight. E is Board Committee Reports, the Facility Committee Update, there wasn't a meeting in July of 2021, and the next meeting is Thursday, August 26, 2021, at 4:00 P. M. Item two is the Policy Committee Update. The meeting was held Wednesday, July 28, 2021, at 4:00 P. M. Mrs. Davis.
The meeting was called to order at 4:05 P. M. Changes in the Student Code of Conduct were reviewed and were presented earlier tonight. Major changes in the parent and student handbooks were reviewed and were also presented earlier tonight. Dr. Ott presented the most recent information of House Bill 547 regarding homeschool and U I L legislation. He stated that individual school districts have the option to allow homeschool students to participate in district U I L events. The district has until August 1st to let U I L know if the district will be allowing homeschool participation, pardon me. Several policies were discussed and will be reviewed at tonight's meeting. The meeting was adjourned at 4:54 P. M. The next Board Policy Committee meeting is scheduled for August 25, 2021, at 4:00 P. M.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. For the Board Policy Review, one, F E C Legal Attendance Attendance for Credit. F E C Local Attendance Attendance for Credit. F E D Legal Attendance Attendance Enforcement. Four, F E C Local Attendance Release Time. Five, G K A Legal Community Relations Conduct on School Premises. And six, G K A Local Community Relations Conduct on School Premises. Mr. Hagenberg.
Thank you, sir. As we've talked about before, when we're dealing with attendance, there's two different pieces. One is for truancy, and the other piece is for credit. This policy, F E C, deals with attendance for credit. State law says that in order to receive credit or the final grade for the class, a student must attend 90% of the days that the course is offered. If the student, and it doesn't matter in this regard whether it's excused or unexcused absences, student has to attend 90%. If the student attends between 75 and 90, they can, the, the campus principal can present a plan, a makeup plan for that student, and if the student satisfies that, then they get their, their final grade. Beyond that, there is an Attendance Appeals Committee, and they can, based on extenuating circumstances, even if it's beyond the 75% award credit to the student, or give them their, their final grade. One of the unique things with this one, as far as the board is concerned, if the Attendance Appeals Committee denies them credit, that appeal comes to the board, and if they appeal, typically that's where it ends. This is one of the few cases where then they would appeal to the district court in the county. So that's unique as far as this policy is concerned. Getting to the local piece, talking about the, the Attendance Appeals Committee, some of the things they look at is makeup work, were the reasons for the absences out of the parent and student's control? Did they maintain their past, did they maintain their grades? But the overall standard is the committee looks at what's in the best interest of the student. And some of the things that, when we talked about the principal's plan that can award credit, some of the things that can, they can look at are completing assignments, going to tutorials, going to summer school, taking an exam, that's those type things for credit. F E D talks about attendance enforcement, so now we're shifting over to the truancy side of attendance. If a student fails to attend school 10 days or parts of days without an excuse, so that's the unexcused absences, then they are truant. For us in our county, that goes to the justice of the peace. They're the ones, they're the court that's set up for truancy cases. Some of the things we can't, even if it is unexcused, some of the exceptions for those absences is if they are, a student is pregnant, or if they're in foster care or homeless, or they are the principal income earner of the family, then those absences can't be part of the truancy case for students. In this policy, truancy officers are given the authority to investigate, apply truancy prevention measures, monitor school attendance, and make home visits. And our truancy officers do make a lot of home visits, not just for attendance, but particularly with remote learning, to check on the welfare of the student, to give them assignments, to lots of things connected with, with the school. Truancy prevention measure, measures, that's a large piece of legislation two and four years ago. Part of the, that's one of the things the court requires now for truancy cases to move forward, and part of those measures includes a behavior intervention plan. And some of those things look at not only the absences, but what's the root cause of the absences, and make sure there's continued communication with the, the parent. F E F Local, different policy. This, one of the things of note here, it says, "Students shall not be excused during school hours for private lessons of any nature," and that sort of ties into the U I L and homeschool conversation. And then the last policy, G K A, deals with conduct on school premises. We are under the laws of Texas, so the laws of Texas apply to conduct on our campuses. An unauthorized person, person who trespasses, that's a Class C misdemeanor, and a school administrator, school resource officer can refuse a person admittance to their campus if they pose a substantial risk to harm, but they do have to be given a verbal warning, have to be given the opportunity to change their behavior, and then if it can persist, then they can be escorted off. And that does have to be in writing. Even when a parent is no longer allowed to come on campus, we do make accommodations for if their student has, in law it says, if they're having an R or a 504 meeting, but we also, if they needed to meet with the teacher, as long as they called ahead, we make those accommodations. Some of the things also that mentioned in this, the things that aren't allowed, tobacco, alcohol, fireworks, and guns. There are some exceptions. This is where you see the school zone, the gun-free school zone, and that applies to 1,000 feet from the school boundary. So some of the things that this, you can possess a gun, even though you might be within 1,000 feet, as if it's your own personal property, but it just so happens that your house is within 1,000, 1,000 feet of, of the, the campus. As we've talked about in other policies, if the gun is in your vehicle, and it's not loaded, and it's locked and not in sight, you can have that in your vehicle, and that also pertains to staff. If the gun is part of the approved program of school, that typically happens with ROTC, if they're having target practice, or from a school or a law enforcement officer, or if you're just traveling through, like if you're going down I-35, and it's in your vehicle, or you're within 1,000 feet, but then that, these laws don't apply to you in that regard. I will also mention that it is a Class A misdemeanor for someone to have a handgun in a room where there is a open meeting act, so the, there's, except with the exception as listed for our S R O sitting right there. It is illegal to, even if you do have concealed carry, to have a gun in a board meeting. Any questions?
You might have any questions? All right. Thank you, Eric. There have been no further items on our agenda. We are adjourned. Thank you very much for attending tonight.